Um, Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Kersner is present. Ms. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Robertson? Uh, Dr. Soltero?
Here.
Dr. Shabolts? And Ms. Smith? Alright, we are all present and accounted for.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Also move? Okay, Mr. Kersner is aye. Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
And it seems that we have no visitor comments at this time, so we'll so we will go on with the informational items, starting off with the governing board report of current events. And if, you have something to report?
I, I don't want to, yeah. I just want to say, this being my last meeting, my term as a board member, I want to thank the Aho community and especially the kids for the opportunity to serve them over these past few years and that I look forward to continuing to serve in other capacities. I'm still gonna do that stuff like you did over the weekend, that's alright. And um, I feel comfortable and confident that I'm leaving the district in good hands with the board and with the, the administration and I know there's gonna be great things for the future of Aho Schools.
Ms. Robertson?
Right, you're saying very good.
So, and thanks for your three and a half years on the board, three and a half years plus. Our district is stronger because of your efforts on the board. Our staff and our students will benefit from that very much. And we also have, we also have Marcia Duncan, who was leading after twelve years on the board and her career in education. And since Eric has served with her on boards longer than I have, he is going to present her with her during the way gift as well.
Marcia, after thirteen, thirteen, twelve years being on the board, being elected with you the first time. I'm gonna have the district and the board like to give you this. If you'd like, I'll read it for everybody.
Marcia Duncan, twelve years of service, Aho School Governing Board. Thank you from the student, staff and administration of the Aho United Unified School, January two thousand eleven to December two thousand twenty-two. Thank you.
You've been to, was it six hundred and twenty-four meetings, not including special sessions?
And some of them have been very pleasant.
We all appreciate everything you've done for the district.
Thank you.
And we're all in a great place because of you. Thank you very much.
I'll miss you.
We're gonna miss you too.
You can come online.
Do you want a picture of everybody in the brand room?
Okay, does anybody else on the board have something to report on? If not, we will move on to the superintendent's report of current events.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, I wanted to present a little different kind of superintendent's report. Later on, you're gonna hear from me again during the evaluation in-depth reports. And so I figured I'll just change it up, do something a little different. This is from the J-TED meeting we had here. Pima County J-TED was very supportive of our program. And I believe Angelina has a little, um, she was able to put a little music with this. And so I'll let it play and then I'll just talk about it after. You know what, can, can we lower the, the volume? I'll just go slide by slide, just to share with everyone. This was part of our first ever AUSD beautification project. And so we had, um, under the direction of, she was our coordinator, Coach Wildon Quinell. Coach Q, can you please stand up? She deserves all the credit. And so we had staff, community, we had Ms. Macarayo and, and her husband. Uh, one of our new teachers, we had Ms. Fadria and her family, they just came over. And we had a, a lot of, we had Aho, Aho was there. You see that young lady on the far left? Ms. Rodriguez is one of our new board members. I believe on the next slide, we have Ms. Robertson, I believe Mr. Morales, who I understand served as a principal and also as a board member. And that young man on the far left is my father, Victor Soltero. He wanted to come all the way from Tucson, so he wanted to come help out. Um, there we have, there's a root at the base, the bottom of that shovel that, uh, Ms. Robertson was determined to take out and she didn't leave till we took it out. So, uh, it was great though, her and Mr. Morales cut it out. Uh, the next we have Ms. Rodriguez, she didn't stop. She, she started right there, that's in front of the gym area. And she went from there all the way around, uh, towards the softball field, towards the track. And so it was great to see the, the energy. Uh, the next slide, we have, uh, Ms. Robertson and Ms. Cote. And so it was good to see the staff here helping out and just people from the community, there you go. In front of the district office, Ms. Cote, uh, my father, Victor Soltero, Ms. Macarayo, Ms. Fadria, just ranking wherever we could find things to do. Uh, this, these two were, were a dynamic duo, Ms. Lesko and Ms. Katie. Um, they attacked the baseboards in the gym and just started cleaning away on their own. Everyone just kind of found their own thing to do. And there we have also, uh, Ms. Moreno, I believe, and Mr. Moreno. Um, they just moved out the trophy cases and just got to work. I mean, everyone was really self-directed. And we have here, I want to say Ms. Little and, and, uh, one of our many sheriff's deputies that, that arrived in uniform and just got ready and started cleaning. Very nice family. And there was, there was a start. When we, when we started at eight o'clock, you can see everyone in there. From, uh, from left to right, you see there, uh, myself, Mr. Hopkins. And we have Ms. Moreno and Ms. Morales, Mr. Lesko, Coach Q and Mr. Coach Q. Ms. Rodriguez and I want to say, who's it, the young man right behind her?
Nacho.
Okay, there we go. And we have Ms. Little and my father. I think we have, is that Morgana back there?
And Gabriel.
Okay, okay. And so that, that's who we started out with when it was about eight o'clock. And, uh, long story short, by the time we got outside, uh, we had, I think, over fifty people. And everyone just had breaks and shovels and it was great to see. And so that's our first, uh, AUSD beautification project. And, and, uh, many of the people there shared that, that they had been wanting to do this for a long time. Uh, that they wanted to do another one. Uh, Mr. Robertson was also, I don't have him on the picture here, but he first started outside, then he went into the gym. It was cleaning the mirror room, the rocks. And so he actually gave us some good ideas of, of, for the next cleanup, to have it set up, uh, different teams in advance. So who can attack what areas, right? When they come in, they just go either to the gym, to the field. And so I know Coach Q was talking also with a lot of, uh, volunteers, but kind of a different superintendent report. Just wanted to show you what, what had happened, uh, last Saturday. And also if we can go back to Mr. Chigi, I believe, Angelina, the very first picture. We were, uh, very fortunate, on November thirtieth, we had visitors from the Pima County J-TED. Thomas Bogart, I believe is the Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Chigi, our CTE Director. Uh, Tina Norton, J-TED Special Projects, Patty Greeny, J-TED Chief Economic Officer and Kathy Crater, Crater, the Superintendent for Pima County J-TED. We took them on a tour, Dr. Shabolts and Mr. Chigi, met them during the board conference, from then I joined the meeting and we took them to our aerospace class. Where I think Mr. Bogart actually got to do a flight simulator and the students coached them through. We figured we'd have a little, uh, practical experience for our visitors. But that's, um, superintendent report. Just wanted to kind of just put some faces, uh, show a couple of the events going on. And the Pima County J-TED team was very impressed and just really pledged their support. Really loved the program, just, especially Mr. Bogart kept sharing with us that you can see a lot of great things going on here at Aho. Um, uh, Ms. uh, Ms. Laura Smith, our business manager, was also present at the meeting. Uh, her and Ms. Preter, um, uh, we had Tucson, I believe. So, a lot of great things going on, great news. Um, as Dr. Shabolts shared with you, uh, yesterday, we're gonna add another component to a J-TED CTE, uh, Mr. Coach Q with electronics, but there's a lot of great things going on. And it's not my report, the traditional report, you can see it in the faces and the events going on. So that's my, um, superintendent's report on current events.
Thank you very much.
May I have a question?
Sure.
I thought you had a Yankees hat. I saw a Lakers hat in there.
It was a Lakers hat.
What's the matter with the?
That's my, that's my twin brother. You know, you know, in Tucson, Tucson, Arizona, growing up is a U of A town.
I'll forgive you for that.
You know, growing up, we, we picked different sports teams, but we also followed the Suns and the Cardinals and a little bit of everybody. So, uh, it was a great, it was, Saturday was a really great, just a really good shot in the arm. Uh, it was great to see the people there and, and they all kept saying, when are we gonna do this again? So, uh, we're gonna work, Coach Q, and find out how we can make it better next time, so. It was very successful.
Outstanding.
Thank you very much. Okay, and that's my basis is the consent agenda. We have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I will second it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Kersner is aye. Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
On to personnel. The first item of business is the certified employment CTE electronics teacher, Dale Quinell.
I would like to make the motion for approval with an amendment to it, that we separate um, the, the two.
Yes, the job description.
The job description and the employment of the.
I'll make, I'll second that. And I'll say, based on a discussion with the lawyer today, that's how we are supposed to do that, when that, when that happens like that.
Okay, uh, I'm the first of officially hiring Mr. Coach Q. Okay, well, yeah, then we'll do that part first. Then I'll go ahead and be a aye for that.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
But it is created five to zero. And as for the hiring of Mr. Coach Q, I will vote aye. Mr. Hopkins? Aye. Uh, Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next item of business is the classified resignation of school nurse Shannon Wolf.
Mr. Hopkins, um, Shannon Wolf has submitted a resignation as Aho Schools nurse to the administration. Her last date of employment will be December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. I recommend the approval of the resignation of Shannon Wolf as school nurse.
Thank you. I will make the motion.
I'll second. Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kersner is aye. Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Robertson?
I, I just think one person needs to say thank you to the board that we take the seat.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's a no.
And we will pass it four to one with everything noted. Thank you, Marcia.
Okay. Next item of business, classified employment, uh, the Aho School Nurse, Jezna Augustine.
Mr. President, members of the board, Jezna Augustine has been interviewed and wrapped its check for a position of Aho School Nurse. She has received her fingerprint transfer card. Recommend the approval of the employment of Jezna Augustine as the Aho School Nurse.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Kersner is aye. Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, next item, classified employment, paraprofessional teacher's aide, Irene Casparena.
Mr. President, members of the board, Irene Casparena has been interviewed for the position of paraprofessional teacher's aide. Ms. Casparena has received her IDP background check. I recommend the approval of the employment of Irene Casparena as a teacher's aide.
Okay, I will make the motion.
I'll second. Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kersner is aye. Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, next item is the approval of the inflation stipend.
Mr. President, members of the board, all on administrative employees, we see a payment of twelve hundred dollars to be paid from M and O. After payroll taxes, income will be approximately one thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Um, I would like to, I will second, and I'd like to add something to this if, or unless you're gonna do it.
I'm, I'm just gonna.
Okay, I'll second. Go for it. Yeah.
Uh, again, we had a talk with the lawyer today and we asked him about increasing this dollar amount. He said, since it was specified in the, in the agenda, we should keep it at what it is. And then if we want to in January to vote to add a hundred dollars to it, to get it so that the total payment is over a thousand, that was the best way to go about that. Is that what you were gonna say?
Exactly what I was gonna say. So, Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kersner is aye. Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Motion's approved, five to zero.
Next item, extra pay position, uh, it says employment, but we're talking about the basketball developmental team and the appointment of a coach.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, the Boys Basketball Development Team, Mr. Sane is requesting a pay position to coach eighth and ninth graders to grow a high school program. Uh, I recommend the approval of the Boys Basketball Development Team, Mr. Sane as a teacher.
Okay, and I'll make the motion with the amendment that we're going to split this one like we did before. So we have one vote on creating the position, the second vote on putting the person in the position.
And I will second.
Question. Um, so are we going to specify the pay rate for the, yeah, the amount for the position?
I believe the pay rate would be up to the administration to specify instead of us.
And what they, what was the last night they wanted to do, average it out between the head coach and assistant coach, correct?
Which I think if we did the math was about sixteen hundred?
Uh, twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred? Okay.
So, my question is, let's say a sophomore, junior decides after Christmas if they want to come out and be part of this. If it's specified eighth and ninth graders or we're not gonna allow older kids to show up and be a part of this, or a cutoff date for it. I mean, since we're not playing the official schedule, let's see, he doesn't care when the cutoff date is. So, are we, are we gonna prove this for other kids? And then, I don't know if I will, but if they do. Uh, Mr. Guthrie, Ms. Pre, Mr. Guthrie, uh, Dr. Shabolts is gonna be working closely with Mr. Sane and our athletic director also, Mr. Yorn, they're gonna make sure that they're all in, in the room at the same time, working over all the details. Since this will be something to do, but also, uh, very critical to maintain our, to continue and try and reestablish a foundation for, for next year's team. Hopefully have a junior varsity, then even to the varsity. So, they're gonna, uh, take the lead and iron out all the details and. I, I'm just wondering if we could change this, um, from eighth and ninth graders to just anyone that's interested kid-wise could come out and be part of this. Is it too late to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, the, the actual motion just says a Boys Basketball Development Team, the, the motion on the bottom, the, you're actually going for. It just says a Boys Basketball Development Team. It doesn't have the actual rates in the motion. It just has it in the explanation. So you can vote on it as is. There's no greater law in the motion.
Okay. Okay, so we made the motion, so.
Yeah.
Um, voting on creating the team, I vote aye.
I am also an aye. Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
And now voting on appointing Mr. Sane as the coach, I'm voting aye.
Um, I am also an aye. Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
That's approved by deserve.
Uh, next item of business is the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget revision.
Uh, Mr. President, as stated yesterday after the annual financial report was submitted, uh, the revision provides solid numbers for every board, uh, ADA and M and O recurring years on loan, major funding. Uh, the current year of school district funding creates the necessity of fiscal year budget revisions prior to the end of that fiscal year. Approval of the Aho Unified School District fiscal year twenty-three budget revision is recommended for ARS fifteen dash nine oh five, and Ms. Smith is here in case there are any questions.
Ms. Duncan?
Yeah, she explained pretty well this.
Yeah.
Coverage program, so don't forget if we approve it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Um, Mr. Kersner is aye. Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you. You're doing a fantastic job for us. I appreciate it. Uh, thank you for that. You always wonder if we've been.
I, I did think it was extra helpful, the way you broke it down this last time, but.
Thank you.
Okay, next item of business is the approval of the governance team handbook.
Mr. President, members of the board, uh, this approval review is up to the governing board.
Okay.
This is your call.
I'll make the motion.
And I was gonna make the motion, but I was gonna, with the contingent that we go through what the changes people wanted to make first and vote on those.
I mean, how it should work is that we should, we should move to adopt it as it is, right? It, because it's approval of governing board handbook, and then if people want to make amendments.
So then I'll second it.
Okay, quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Can we do that? Once we approve it, can we, because that almost is almost like another agenda item.
Done before, we've made the motion and approved it and then voted on the changes and then.
So, so you make the motion and then you second it, and then there's discussion if we want.
Mm-hmm.
At that point, anyone can propose amendments. And then we vote on each amendment.
Yes.
Individually, and then go back to the original motion.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I thought I was saying.
Okay, I thought you were saying approve it first and then amend it.
No, but we had to do the motion and second before we could do anything else.
Right, so discussion.
So now it's open for discussion and amendment.
So, based off what I have written down here from yesterday, I would like to propose the amendments with the requested changes from yesterday.
Okay.
Which Ms. Duncan requested a title change to Aho Unified School District Governing Board Handbook. And then one discussed the date on the front to remove it, since basically the calendar, because we don't need to have the date on the front.
That's done. Because there was consensus on that.
Okay, then that's fine. So then basically, so that's what I got so far here.
So are you making the motion to change the title?
I am asking for the amendment to be made to change the title to Aho Unified School District Number Fifteen Governing Board Handbook.
So we need a motion.
I'm making a motion.
We're waiting for a second. Okay.
Okay. So, more discussion?
Change to, yeah.
Does anybody have any more discuss on changing the title of this document?
You know, specific title?
Um, just like I just stated, we must do Governing Board Handbook.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, Mr. Kersner is aye. Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie? Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, what was the next proposed change?
Um, that was it, because they had the consensus of the date, so we didn't need to.
I thought there were other changes to other sections of it.
That's what I've got. Oh, and also the other one was, uh, I apologize for that, was, um, updating of this falls to the clerk of the board.
Yes.
Yes. I'll make the motion that we.
We had consensus on that, I thought, unless.
We did. As far as I knew, we did.
Okay, I'll make the, I mean, we can.
Well, we can do it. Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
So.
So now we're voting on the document.
I'll make the, would you make the motion or not?
Wendy made the motion.
Wendy made the motion. Second, okay, Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kersner is aye. Ms. Duncan?
What is the motion?
About the clerk being responsible for the updating of the, okay, and Mr. Guthrie? Five to zero.
Okay, are there any other amendments to this document? Okay. So, whether it goes back to you, I think, do you make your motion with the one change, the two changes that were made to it?
Um, yeah, so now it goes back to the original motion with the amendments, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll still second it.
Okay, uh, so Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kersner is aye. Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
Next item is the minimum wage increase.
Mr. President, members of the board, um, for the Arizona voters to approve minimum wage increase, AUSD must increase minimum wage to thirteen eighty-five per hour. Attached are the twenty-two district employees who will have their wages increased by one dollar and five cents, eight percent. Because of the voter-approved law, I recommend the approval of the wage increase for the listed twenty-two staff members effective January twenty twenty-three.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. So this is only applies to employees that were employees' district prior to today, correct? No?
This is the minimum wage.
Oh, no, I was thinking something else. Never mind. I was thinking something else. Never mind. Disregard that.
Fiscal year twenty-two budget, right?
Oh, yeah, this, this, uh, required increase to minimum wage comes from whatever fund it.
Give her a second.
Yeah, Wendy, first, I second.
All right, so we're ready to vote.
Hmm?
Ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, uh, Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
And Mr. Kersner is aye. It passes five to zero.
Okay, um, next matter of business, if you need to convene into an executive session.
No, we have two more.
Staff survey.
Try to keep looking back and forth between the, the items and the actual.
Do you want to use the tablet?
Yeah, I'm not ready. Okay, the next item then is the twenty twenty-three staff survey.
Mr. President, members of the board, um, as we can see on board docs, it was clear that we're going into board docs. A member of the governing board is requesting an evaluation revision of the AUSD staff survey. The administration is asking the board for their feedback and has contacted other pre-K, pre-K twelve districts for examples. Uh, this is a board decision and we had in-depth discussion yesterday. It's your call. As far as the recommendation or the action.
What is the recommendation?
Um, Dr. Soltero, she was asking a question. She, she asked what the recommendation was, if it was just to consider the.
Yeah, the, uh, from what I remember from yesterday, uh, the board as far as saw three, uh, three surveys. Three surveys from three different districts, from Sunnyside, Sawanita and Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District. I mean, if I remember correctly, you went to.
Yes. I'll make the motion that the administration can choose either, either, any of these three tools that they find works the best or they may combine elements from both of them to do it.
I'll second.
Uh, I would like to amend that to add, oh, for friendly amendment, if you're open to it. Uh, that, uh, requirements be that it's anonymous online. uh, requirements be that it's anonymous online, that all staff are surveyed, um, and that any modifications are made necessary that, um, tailored to our district.
Yes.
Um, so to keep, make sure it, people's, uh, information is confidential.
Mm-hmm.
And to, um, address the fact that we have um, a special situation where we have both the district office and the school office on one campus engaging with our school committee.
Okay, I'll accept those amendments to the motion. Do you still second?
Um, I'll still second. I just think that's just kind of like basically saying, we'd want you to do this, you know, he's probably already gonna do it.
That what?
That the, the administration's probably gonna already do that anyway.
So.
You know, so.
Okay, so we'll vote.
Vote for vote. Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kirsich is aye. Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Passed by the four to one.
Well, and it's the amendment that I did.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a fan of it, but.
For the document to have the superintendent and Dr. Chebault's work, that, that's, I would say yes, but when you add the amendments, it changed it a little bit. I think you, that's up to you.
Uh, next, uh, item is the board discussion and vote on, possible vote on board docs implementation and meeting procedure.
Mr. President, members of the board, uh, the information as we can see, board discussion, possible vote on board docs implementation procedure. Recommendation is this is a board decision.
Okay.
So, um, as I said yesterday, I asked.
We have to have a motion first.
Sorry, motion.
I'll second. Now discussion.
Um, I asked for this, uh, opportunity to have input on the implementation of board docs and the agenda meeting, um, uh, procedure. Uh, there are a few things that I, I passed out a list of the things that I was interested in addressing, um, should I just go through them and?
Yes.
Okay, um, hopefully I'll start with the easier, less, or less complex ones. Um, first one is add procedural to the call to order, um, under the study session agenda.
Okay.
So, um, go to the study session, agenda, and the, the call to order.
Every, every time I, I, I open a new agenda or I start a new agenda, those are, like, if I do go to local and, and I, are you sure you want me to edit that? So every time I open the call order, or the open of the meeting, I, I get to choose what's there.
Right.
So change is every meeting. I just have to be, it's not something that's gonna be there all the time. Does that make sense?
For all of the, so, because on all the other ones, there's a type already selected, so it's like a template, but that one wasn't white, that's all.
The, oh, say that again, call to order.
So, so all of the opening meeting items, um, have a type, so it's action, discussion.
Okay, so I just forgot to hit one on that time.
Okay, so it should be procedural.
Single one I opened, I have to click on that button. If I don't pick up the button, it's wrong. So if, if there's no, there is no constant.
There's no way to save the settings.
There's no way to save it and go on.
So you can't create a template that has all of, you have to recreate the whole agenda every single time?
No, it, it comes, it comes off when I say, you know, I copy the meeting, and then delete all of the ones from before. So if this one is clicked here, it wasn't clicked in the last.
Okay, that's fine. I, I just wanted to point out that it should say procedural and it says nothing, so that's all.
So that's.
That's all. So that's an easy fix. That's what I thought it would. Um, the next one is for the call to public. Oh, do you need one?
Yeah, I had it here, but it's gone.
Extra one.
No, I, no, not that, the, the paper she passed out yesterday. I had it here, but it's gone.
You wanna borrow mine?
Sure.
Share, or I can share.
There we go, we're good.
Um, so the next one is, um, for the, the, at the call for public comment, if you click on public comment guidelines. Um, thank you. So, one thing that has come up on more than one occasion is we have in there as a guideline, as a requirement essentially, that people state their name and their address. Um, it is actually a requirement, like a legal requirement that they state their name, but not their address. And we've had people ask not to. Um, and I personally have been uncomfortable when, like, teenage girls are coming up to speak to the board and they're asked to, to state their address. So I would like to have that and address just removed from that. It, and, and if anyone is opposed to any of these things, obviously, it doesn't have to happen. We can, we can talk about it, so. Does, does anyone have?
I think we should leave the addresses for adults. But if they're a student, they can just say, my name is such, as I'm a student here. But I still think it's. Because I'd like to know there's people that live in the district that are making comments. That's just my opinion.
True, that I can also see in this age of where the meeting is publicly available to anybody, and there definitely have been some whack jobs around the country showing up at people's houses.
Or we just, or we have people state whether they are or not a.
That one, boy.
Or that they, whether they live or not in the district.
A relationship.
Because I think that's important.
Relationship to the district. I'm a teacher at the district, and I'm a parent, I'm a parent, I'm a student.
Because someone lives in the district has a lot more bearing to me than someone that doesn't.
Mm-hmm.
I really don't care.
Do you wanna say relationship?
Yeah.
Yes, that works, relationship to the district.
Yeah, that's helpful, too. Um, okay, thank you, um. Under governing board actions, call for future agenda items. So, this, the, the heading is governing board action. It actually is not an action. Um, I have a suggestion to, to just title it call for future agenda items. Yeah, because it's not technically an action.
It is, it wasn't checked off.
It's just a procedural.
It wasn't checked off as a procedural.
Thank you. Um, and then the next one is the welcome note that we have. It's on, I think if you go to the featured page.
Yeah, I can. Is that from you?
Um, it's hard to talk, I'm used to seeing it published, um, but I, yeah, it's not. Let me see yours, because mine doesn't have a. So, yeah, it starts with we welcome all community members. Okay, okay, so, um, there are a couple things that, in my opinion, are, are incorrect on here, and one that's just not clear, um, the first.
Ms. Robertson, may I interrupt just a little bit? It seems to me that all of this shouldn't have been done Monday.
No, this, that's, this, this session.
You're using as a discussion on a meeting.
This session was specifically requested for this purpose, and, and the agenda is listed.
But it doesn't give us the time to really unstate our opinions.
I mean, you're welcome to, um.
I just did. I think it shouldn't have been done on Monday.
Okay. Um, may I continue?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so here, the, um, it says you're welcome to attend our regular board meetings. Regular is, is a specific term, and so it could mean you're welcome to attend only our regular board meetings and not all the special sessions. Um, all, I, I, I'm not asking you to correct that right now, because I, I have a, um.
And, and, and I actually, I, I read through what you gave me yesterday.
Oh, you did, okay.
And it's, it's great. We do have the heat, uh, county board of supervisors in there, because when I do open meeting log, I have to register with them where the physical place is that we post our agendas. Um, when, if, if it changes and when it changes, I have to post with the county board supervisors.
Okay, so do you?
So I have to leave that in.
That's fine. So do you have, um, you have the proposed?
I have that. I just have to retype it in. It's gonna take way too long.
Okay, yeah, I don't expect you to do it right now. Um, I included, you all have it. I included, I added also a section about minutes that was not there, and it's because this is like the welcome and minutes statement. Um, so if everyone is okay with making those changes, then we can move on.
I'd like to hear all the changes before I say I'm okay with any of them.
Do you want me to read the statement?
I, I, I can read it. I just, I mean, I just.
It's, it's totally different, that's the thing.
Oh, I know, I just, I just need to, to read this and absorb it and decide, because I'm not gonna say okay to any of this at the second right now. I just need to.
Do we still have to go over the things in the backside or the red things on here?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, okay, so okay. Um, and then the next thing is, um, what is it? Oh, the scripted statement. So, and this is, this is more of a discussion, um, and Angelina, I'm gonna ask for um, information for you, from you about this. Um, at the welcome and call, uh, the welcome statement at the call to order. Um,
our, when, when I was setting this up with, with board docs, it, it said, uh, our agenda item just said, um, call welcome, and then it didn't say anything. It's never really said anything, and then it said call to order. But we don't really do a thing of welcome.
Yeah.
And, and I don't think that we've ever done it yet. So I kind of just took it out.
Okay.
Because it, it, basically, every president, every president that, uh, where I've been here, they just call the meeting to order. There's not really like a welcome statement.
Right.
So I just kind of took it out because it was unnecessary.
Okay, I understand.
And then I switched some things around because, um, it just made the agenda flow better, and it was kind of those things that was procedural and that we passed to it. Like, we, we probably should do roll call. We should probably should have called the meeting order. We probably should do council meetings. So, but the welcome really wasn't sure.
So, yeah, I, I did notice that it, that the, the category wasn't there, which is fine, um. So for for minutes requirements, we are not required to approve minutes, but we are required that if it's like an audio recording or a video recording, the minutes contain certain things like the time, the date, and the location. And the intent with this statement was to vocalize those things. So our digital minutes, our, our recordings count as minutes.
Well, that right there, that YouTube video has all that on there.
All have the date and time on.
They, they already do?
Yeah.
And.
They all do. That's how they're, you go to, I've already uploaded the ones from, right?
And.
And it has the date and the time.
And the location.
And the location.
I'll use my folder here.
Yeah, so, um.
I can put it on there.
And, yeah, yeah, that's fine. So, so for when we have audio recordings, is it, is that similar? Is there a, like a timestamp on audio recordings?
When, no, when the audio recording is playing, when I save it, so it's not just a random bunch of numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And it's saved of the study session on December
Okay.
fifth, two thousand and six.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And unless the time is different, then all of them are at five thirty.
Okay, so my understanding that, so maybe this isn't necessary, the, the, like, saying that those things. Um, but my understanding that is that, that, yeah, as long as we have the location, time, and date attached to those, we don't ever have to have written minutes.
Right, because now that we have board docs, every video that's posted has the video attached to it with the date, time, and location.
Awesome. Okay, so I would, I wouldn't ask for that change then.
Doesn't. Unless I don't have a video for it.
Right.
Um, I think there's a couple that, that something went haywire. I think like, uh, like the July one for some strange reason, it didn't download and YouTube just went, that's void. Um, so I'll probably have to put that on here, but it'll have the date and the time, and the video's attached to it. So everything's there.
Okay, okay, great. Um.
Gonna make less.
Yeah. Um, so, next, um, with the consent agenda, we have an item that's typically called financial report. I'm gonna propose that whatever that report is, is specified, because financial report is really vague, and that is the item description. Um, so, rather than financial report, it would say something like student activities account report, because that's what is contained in the item. Um, and then along the same lines, this has been something that I have wanted to address for a long time. Um, our consent agendas, we typically have, um, like vouchers financially for donations, maybe a couple other things, regardless of if there's any content. So, we have, we sometimes approve consent agendas that, um, have items listed that may or may not have anything in them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's a problem because, like, for, for a history of it, we, we may not actually be sure that there ever was anything in it, especially, especially with the consent agendas where we tend to get things like maybe my email, maybe board docs that should probably, will probably be different now. Um, but I would propose that only things that actually have, that, that we're voting on appear on the agenda. So they aren't like empty items. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, you're saying only things that we're gonna be voting on appear on the agenda, you know, in general, so that, that would mean things like Mr. Casey's presentation on the grade, on the school's grade would not be on the agenda, even though it was part of the meeting. Because it's not something we voted on.
Oh, no, no, okay, I'm sorry. I, yes, I didn't, I didn't mean that we're voting on. Only, only item on the agenda where the, where something is actually happening, we're voting. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a consent item with content in it. It's a discussion. It's a report.
Okay.
Um, it's just not empty. As we've been doing it, we've had empty items. So we're voting on these items that are sitting there, but, but they aren't really anything. There's been times where we voted for a consent agenda that literally contained nothing and had a list of items, so.
Okay.
I'm proposing that only, only thing, only items appear on the agenda that have content of some sort.
Okay.
Uh, the purpose of the consent agenda is to have things on there that aren't necessarily always looked to on the agenda or that don't always necessarily meet that twenty-four hour, um, that twenty-four hour deadline, that if we got it the day of, we could put it on the agenda because it's already listed on the consent agenda. But if I take off four minutes in donations, nobody, a five thousand dollar donation the day of the meeting, and it's not listed on the consent agenda, because it's not itemized out, I can't put anything under that donation, because that's the purpose of the consent agenda, is to do those last minute budget things that we have to approve.
So. So, so for the example of, let's say there's, there are no donations, so you don't have something for the consent agenda. It's, it's, it's nothing, right? And then we, we get a donation a few hours ahead of time, you can't then make an item for that.
Right, if I take it off, if it's already on the agenda, it's supposed to turn for hours, it's a donation.
Yeah.
Then so I can put it under the donation because it's already there.
I understand what you're saying.
If I take it off, it defeats the purpose of the consent agenda.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. So this is something I, I would ask to get Ben's opinion on.
Yeah, I'll clarify.
Yeah, but because it doesn't seem to me like we should be able to have a consent item.
Sorry, not handed up, but I need to make a note that Mr. Guthrie stepped away from the meeting. So we have a form of four right now and not five. At what time we got?
At seven, six twenty-two?
Eighteen twenty-two. So we have four members present right now. Sorry.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, Angelina. I would just want to be sure that we can do that. Yeah. Awards and recognitions. Okay, so this is also something that most schools do and something that I thought was a good idea for a long time. And that is we have a carve out for awards and recognitions that we start the meeting with. And because it's, it's under, it's essentially similar to a governing board report or a superintendent's report, it's allowable. But it's, it just makes a point of starting the meeting with something positive. And there's almost always something that someone like, a recognition that Coach Q organized this thing over the weekend. It could be almost anything. So anyway, I'm going to propose that that be added to our agenda template to start the meeting with an order recognition. And so this is the most complex one is number nine, move personnel actions to the consent agenda. And list those personnel actions on a spreadsheet rather than as individual items as we've been doing. So this is what a lot of schools do. And the reason for that, I mean, there's a lot of good reasons. It's, it's efficient because you know, a lot of times it's the bulk of an agenda to have all the people. But the other reason is that often that it avoids needless discussion of individuals. And this board has done a lot of discussing individuals in the past, sometimes totally appropriately and, you know, recognizing people.
Ignore Mr. Guthrie has returned the meeting at eighteen twenty-three. Sorry.
And sometimes not. So anyway, it, it, it is an efficient and useful thing to do. And I just wanted to put that out there as, as, as something that other schools do a lot, maybe most other schools do from what I can tell, I was looking at other people's agendas, other districts' agendas. And I have a sample template, a sample table of what that could look like. So it has like the list of people, what the action is, are they resigning or is it employment? What the, the full-time equivalent is and when the effective date is and what the job, what the title is, the job description.
If we made that change, would the board still be provided the actual application and resume for everybody that were in the consent agenda?
Yeah, they could. It could be because it would just be put in Board Docs, right?
Yes, but say like you're, you're doing, I mean, it's up to you guys. Whatever you guys want to do is kind of simple in a way. But when, when we, yes, we can add all of the, the applications. I can, I can add as many attachments on, on things as, as needed. So we just have to figure out what is public and what is private or what's for the administration. So the, the Excel agenda, the Excel spreadsheet is okay for public, but the applications are not.
Right, correct.
So one of the other things is like resignation letters. They're like personal resignation letters.
So that wouldn't be public.
So probably, or some of them are just like, I'm leaving on the third of, you know, December or whatever. So is it, is it paid by unit basis or is it all the time?
I would think that just the spreadsheet information would be public and any of those personal items like applications or letters would be private. So anyway, that's really, that's really it. Those are the changes that I would like to see.
Well, I know I had a question for you about what was included in discussions and reports. And after talking with you, I realized it was things like Mr. KC giving his presentation on the school's letter grade. It wasn't something voted on. It wasn't a board action, but it was a discussion slash report on that information.
That was the same session, right? That's the purpose of the same session, is for reports and discussion.
Well, it could be either. We've, we've created these two meetings to be able to have discussions or reports on either day.
Who created it?
The board did.
When? I mean, I still get back that it should not have been part of this meeting. We don't have enough, it's just going ah in my brain. It's very difficult.
Different motion to make regarding this. Can I just make that motion, request it?
I'm not sure how that works.
Because I have a motion that.
Believe what it is, is we would have to vote on the motion on the table first before a second motion could be made.
Can we do it this way, like we did it with the handbook, where I make the motion to adopt these changes to the agenda and then you can?
Well, if, okay.
We've already had a motion made.
We have a motion, all right, so we're discussing. So this is my thought is, you bring up a lot of fallouts. This is a lot. I would like to have a motion, if we could amend that motion, or we can approve the use of Board Docs. But I would like to table the rest of these changes so the board can look at it deeper in January and then go through and approve it.
Okay, so we've already approved Board Docs.
Okay.
Wait, we, this is about making this, this discussion.
This is Board Docs implementation.
Right.
So.
Not, not, but, yeah.
So to me, that meant like, okay, are we voting to implement Board Docs, even though we've already done that?
No, it's, really, it's voting on how we are implementing Board Docs, because we already are implementing those. It's amended, we're changing.
I'm fine with the Board Docs, but I would like to table the part about the changes so the board can look and discuss it further in January.
Okay, so you're making that motion.
I would like to make that motion, yeah. Because it's, it's a lot. It's a lot.
You can't make that motion if Wendy's motion still hasn't been voted on. If we have that motion on the table.
Oh, really? I thought, I thought it could be.
You can, you can amend it. You can amend your motion. You can amend it based on what he said. You can say, I changed my motion to table this until January while still using Board Docs, you know, for discussion on this.
Because I don't want to hinder any implementation of Board Docs. I think that's important we have that. But I also think that the board should give your ideas, which a lot are very good. I think it needs to be absorbed more and have a little more discussion on it before we decide what we want to implement on those changes.
Okay. Okay, so I'm not, so we, but we're going to vote on, on implementing these changes.
Yeah, that's the motion on the table right now unless it stands, unless it's amended by the person who made it.
Is there anything in particular, Eric, can I say? Is there anything in particular about your?
No, not in particular. I just think that this needs to be thought over a little bit longer and let the board read it more and understand a little bit before making a decision on it. That's all. I don't think it's, you know, I mean, I'd like a little more time to this tonight going over it.
Okay.
Okay, and Angelina, you have something?
And I'd also like to get the input of the two incoming board members also.
So when you put here's the motion table, then the original motion has to die, not die, but be struck down for the new.
Yes, yes, yeah.
So if she's not comfortable changing her motion table, then you have to table for the original motion. And then it, it passes or it doesn't pass, then the second one.
Well, if it does, oh, yeah. Well, if it doesn't pass, then it's automatically kind of tabled, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I make, are you going to take the roll then for the motion?
Yeah, so we're going off the original motion then, correct? Okay, so.
The motion with the, the proposed changes.
Okay.
Yeah, so can you repeat the motion?
So the motion is Ms. Robertson requesting approval of implementation of Board Docs and her requested changes to the agendas. That's what we'll be voting on right now.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Robertson. Mr. Hopkins. Mr. Kersch is a no. Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Duncan?
No.
And that passes three to two.
Okay. Okay, the next item is the call for agenda items. Somebody on the board have?
I'd like to, we can revisit this in January.
Okay.
Because I would like to get the.
Revisit what?
The changes that you requested that were just approved. I'd like to revisit that in January.
I don't think you can do that.
Why not? I can, I can request any agenda item I want.
I think only I can change, I can, and I'm not going to be here. So once something is passed, in order to change the thing that's passed, I believe that the person who, who mo, made the motion has to.
We've already passed that. It's been approved. So now it's been adopted by the board. Nothing, why can't I, as a board member, say, I didn't know, I want to revisit this in the future now?
Can we get an answer from, from this, from Bob or ASBA on that? Because I'm pretty sure once something is passed, it can't be then brought right back again because.
I believe there's no timeframe on that.
I would think it could because we, I mean, every time, anytime we vote on changing anything in policy or an agenda, we're doing that.
I'm going to request.
Okay. How about this? Alex will accept Eric's proposed agenda item contingent on its legality.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Were there not? I thought there was other things from last.
Well, there was the other from yesterday. Do we need to redo them again for tonight?
No, I just thought there was one that somebody wanted, okay, that's right. If it's already on the request.
Yeah, it's already, they already requested yesterday.
Okay.
Problem is not going to Mr. Guthrie.
Okay, so now the next item is to convene into an executive session for the purpose of the super incidence evaluation.
Do you have to read the thing before we make a motion?
I don't know. I think we go into it, then we read it for everybody that's present.
Do I have the thing to read?
It's on here under executive session ninety.
Right there.
Got it?
Yeah, the all persons present?
Yeah.
Okay, we need a roll call.